This is Adrian Hart with your Southeast Colorado news on CCO News.org. This is About the Valley with the La Jolla City Manager, Rick Klein. We're talking about what happened with La Jolla City Council in last night's meeting. It was a busy meeting, wasn't it, Rick?
Very busy meeting.
Very good. You guys knocked out a lot of stuff, too. First, we're going to talk about Matilda?
Yes, you know, after we called the meeting into order, did invocation, pledge allegiance. But before we did Matilda, we actually did a public hearing and we'd set it for 6:00 PM for new retail fermented malt liquor off premise liquor license by Family Dollar Stores of Colorado.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, you know, which is located at 614 East First Street.
Yep.
But we had a little poof off. We, when it got posted, it said the 16th, not the 18th.
Ah.
Now, of course, you know, that was Saturday night. But, you know, when you're dealing with the public and, you know, you're giving them opportunity to do it, you know, we chose to go ahead and table it and readvertise it for, and we did talk to Family Dollar. They were okay doing this. So it's set for October 1st, or August 1st at 6:00 PM.
Now, this is to make sure that the public has opportunity to speak about the business?
Whether they want liquor being sold at Family Dollar Store in La Jolla, Colorado or not.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So they're adding a profit center potentially there at Family Dollar.
Yep.
Okay.
So then we went to the minutes of the previous meetings and Councilman Ed Villa had the minutes amended to reflect that he had asked for $5,000 for the Transit Festival and from the Tourism Board, but it died for lack of a second.
Okay.
So we amended it and then they were passed. Then we went on to Bethany Tahouli and Heather Pickock Reed, who are doing the Matilda. And it starts tomorrow night.
Now we're talking about Matilda.
Yes, and it'll go until the 23rd and $15. And folks, they did a song and it was fantastic. I'll tell you what, a couple of very talented people.
So what surprised me is the Plays in the Park actors and singers and those kids. That was really awesome.
Awesome.
That's pretty much the same folks involved up at the Picket Wire.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cast is, yeah. So go check them out up at the Picket Wire. Of course, we're going to have, yeah, we're going to have some coverage of that. We have a guest doing a review for us. So we will see Susie Sarlo's first contribution on CCO News.org. So we're going to have a review of the performance so you guys can see some pictures and get out there and get your tickets and go see it for yourself. Matilda, the Picket Wire. Of course, we've got all the information here online. Tickets available, picketwireplayers.org/tickets or contact that box office, leave them a voicemail and let them know how many tickets you want. 719-384-8320. There we go, Rick. Somehow we turned it into a Matilda ad, but.
There you go.
And we got to support our community theater.
Guaranteed. And I'm meeting with the kids. They're supposed to call me about three today or come by and tell me, you know, what worked at the park, what didn't, what was good for putting on a play, what wasn't good, what was good for the patrons that came in and, you know, so we can make adjustments that we need, you know, so.
My only complaint honestly was the heat. If you went to the 3 o'clock performance, then it was hot out.
Hot.
Yeah, we went a day early and did a review. We hung out with Betty McFerrin and it was a great time except for the heat.
Yes.
And I really liked the layout.
I do, too.
I think it's going to work well for that in the future.
Yeah, and I think in the fall and the spring and stuff, that's just going to be so great, you know.
Yeah, once the weather cools off.
And we'll get like misting station and stuff going on that, so we can make it better.
All right, very good.
So then we had MJ Romano from the Presbyterian Church up at 20th and Raton come in and talk about on July 31st, they're going to pray for the renewal of our city. And it starts at 10 o'clock.
Wow.
So, yes, and I hope all the prayers work, you know. So then we went on to a report from Cynthia Neeb. She's Economic Development Director for City of La Jolla. And so economic development is creation of wealth from which community benefits are realized. You know, it's more than jobs programs, investment in growing the economy and enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all residences according to targeted goals and objectives. You know, there's, that's a mouthful.
Yeah.
You know, so how do we get there? You know, with us, you know, we started off, you know, with a La Jolla Economic Development Plan, which we had developed through a company called PUMA. Now, that's Progressive Urban Management Association. They did downtown Loto. They did your 16th Street Mall in Denver. They've done cities like Austin and they're really well known throughout the United States on helping. And they wanted to show that they could do it in a small town. And we did take a deep dive into that and council passed it. So, you know, we've been working on some of those, you know. And economic development, you got to really be able to turn on that dime, you know, and get where the opportunities are. Now Cynthia, she operates under my direction. You know, she doesn't, she ain't a Lone Ranger out there and stuff. And, you know, in the previous decades, economic development was always measured by, you know, how many jobs you can get in manufacturing and stuff. Well, last year, we had a manufacturer, Chicago of Gaskets, wanting to move here and bring 150 jobs. But the owner, I mean, even though he really appreciated our hospitality and information package that he said was very detailed, he declined to move here because of the lack of housing, low education scores in math and reading, and lack of already trained workers. Here's how we're trying to address those gaps. So, you know, as you can tell, economic development just took a turn.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you got to have housing.
Yep.
You have to have a workforce that's trained and educated.
It's so much more than having a factory with workers.
Yes.
I mean, it's not that simple.
Yeah, so since that time, Southeast Colorado's economic developers have secured over 90 new housing units in Southeast Colorado known as the High Prairie Homes. With three units slated to be built in La Jolla over the next year and to move into additional phase. And we do got an opportunity zone person that's eyeballing us. And we're, they're kind of seeing, you know, how this project goes and stuff. But I think it's going to be a winner.
Yeah.
And, and we've been working with SCAD, Southern Colorado Economic Development District.
Yep.
And CSED, which is Southeast Economic Development. And when they first approached us about using some of our ARPA money to do this housing, I thought, oh, boy, you know, better don't try to get all the commissioners and towns to socialize and all these, I've never seen it before.
Yeah.
I wonder how this is going to work, but it worked out very well. We all came together and it's all point in time. Because, you know, when, when we were dealing with the commissioners out of Baca County and Powers and Kyle, I mean, everybody had needs. Everybody was willing to put money to it. And it's probably been one of the better collaborations I've seen in Southeast Colorado in my 40 years doing it.
Yeah, no, it speaks volumes that they were able to get the various governing bodies to collaborate.
Yes, so I'm proud of everybody and I'm proud of CSED and that board and Stephanie Gonzalez. And a guy named Michael Yearman, and he's from SCAD.
Yeah.
And Cynthia, you know, when we saw that, you know, what Michael was doing, we wanted to capture his expertise for some other stuff because, you know, he was making certain that, you know, local housing developers will have an easier time to build new units and rehabilitate the existing units. Yeah, one of the things is, you know, and we all did it, you know, including me. You know, I bought my house from an ex La Jolla. And so I didn't get an appraisal or anything. But over the years, that's actually hurt us because now we don't have any comparables. So Michael, you know, part of the 90 units, he made sure that we had appraisals and stuff so that as we sell homes and everything, that they'll hit that market value versus an unknown value that doesn't have anything comparable. So really thanking for that. And Cynthia penned three grants to hire Michael to help us rewrite La Jolla's land use code and policies. And he's on create a how-to guide to do it. And dealing with him, he's taken our land use code and we'll start on that Thursday from 84 pages to like 27 pages.
Wow.
And they streamlined them into tables and, you know, we're looking at different things about how we can make La Jolla better. And then, you know, then we want to spread that to the other communities in the valley.
There you go. And of course, if you want some more information on that High Prairie Homes, we've got some archive, well, we don't archive any of our articles. They're always available for you to reach. So you can just search for homes or High Prairie Homes and hear that interview with Michael Yearman that we did a couple of months ago.
Yes, that was a good one.
That was actually back in March, man, time flies.
Time does fly. So Otero College is actually stepping up and planning a rollout of an enhanced trades program. Now, this, the training should assist them in filling the gap of qualified workers and contractors in Southern, Southeastern Colorado. So, you know, when they get their rollout going, you know, we're going to be talking about it.
Yep, and I actually do have an article we haven't published yet on that, so.
Good.
Yeah, so.
I can't wait.
We're going to dig back in. When they did their, they gave the community an opportunity to talk directly up at Otero College about what type of new programs they wanted to see offered and what type of changes they wanted at the college. We sent a reporter up there and Joseph has the story. And we're going to do a follow-up with Otero before we publish that so we make sure we've got all the current information in there. But yeah, we'll be releasing that later this week.
So we went to Main Street Open for Business and now they closed a grant program on June 30th, 2022. Now, here's the results. Lincare building, beautiful new windows. And then the owner independently paid for a new swamp cooler and a new roof.
Nice.
And, you know, it brought that building back up. You know, the warehouse at 401 Santa Fe has great looking pellet windows in it and a brand new roof. And you'll find a salon there and a pellet windows showroom and a reuse store. You know, and those are new businesses, actually.
Wow.
Jesse and Jaren Hinckley officially opened up Klein's Makerspace on June 1st. You know, they built a handicap ramp in back, new windows, a roof, doors and more. And you could go down there, weld, sew, 3D print, engrave, learn how to knit, crochet or macrame there and other possibilities.
And that was all, I mean, they're getting support through that Main Street Open for Business.
Main Street Open, yep.
Yep.
The Opera House, you know, rehabilitation of their wooden windows and they did some masonry repointing and a new roof on the first level loft and LED lights, business signs, hayback. And now they're getting ready to open up a pizzeria, which would be open if their pizza stone hadn't been shattered in transit. So as soon as they get that in, they'll be opening it up for us. And the repair of the Opera House metal awning and a high efficiency water heater and more. So staying tuned for Mondelas, Mondelos Pizza.
All right, well, we're going to, I'll follow up with Cynthia and get an update, too, from her.
And the Fox Theater, how about that?
Isn't it beautiful?
Beautiful, and.
Of course, you can see our virtual tour of the Fox.
Guaranteed, sponsored by the City of La Jolla. And, you know, the Fox Theater was able to obtain a new roof, repointing and masonry, storefront updates, including new pulcher stations. But what that did is allow the owners to go ahead and make all those amenities that you see, they made the inside so great, the new chairs and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how much that this means having a downtown theater to our community, but that's just a, I always heard once, if your marquee on your theater ain't opening in your downtown, it's dead.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it's, yes.
No, we're very happy to have the Fox here.
And last but not least, the Froyo, and they got a new roof, door and windows, so.
Right, that's Soco Froyo, they're on Third Street.
Yep.
Go see Jake and Jeffrey and get some of that frozen yogurt.
13, 13 communities out of like 218 communities in Colorado received this grant.
Wow.
That's it.
Wow.
And six people within our community was able to utilize it. So that's, that's, that's good. Now, there's a lot, a lot of programs coming out right now, you know, with the feds, through the states, through, but there's like four years that we have where there's going to be some grant money out there and we got to capture all that money. And that's what I've directed Cynthia to do is to get it, that money, bring in those, leverage our tax dollars to the max. But, you know, bring in those amenities that we can't usually get if we didn't have these type grants. And that's so important. You know, they got a.
Boy, 105 businesses were awarded grants and we've got a handful of them in our community.
Yes.
That's pretty cool.
Pretty cool, you know, my hat's off to her for getting that for us.
Yep, if you want those details, we of course have those up online on CCO News.org so you can get into the nitty gritty and see that they had six sub-grant awards totaling $391,000 with a 20% match by La Jolla Urban Renewal.
Yep, they put up $100,000, you know. So now we have two bilingual navigators. Now navigator, you know, they're going to help you talk to people that don't know English and they, they'll help them with, you know, understanding how do you start a business? You know, how, how to take advantages of all the services here in rural Colorado. This is through First Southwest Community Fund, which is headquartered in Alamosa. Azrael Madrigal is the executive director. She's a wonderful person, really wants to help. They have programs like on a food truck program that offers loans from 5,000 to 50,000. They're working, they're one of First Southwest Community Funds, one of the three awardees through the Office of Economic Development International Trade to develop a revolving loan fund. They'll have micro loans for startup farmers and small businesses and women owned and outdoor businesses.
Very nice.
Yes, and they, so you need to go to their site, you know, because they got like rural micro entrepreneur grants and that's, you know, through the Department of Ag. And they'll get you training and technical assistance for, you know, your small business or if you're an entrepreneur.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, if you have the opportunity, if you fit in the requirements to get those grants, the only way to get them is to apply.
That's right.
Yep, and so, go ahead.
So we went on and we did have one item on citizen participation that I meant to say on my notes. Frank McKenzie, he's the utility board chairman. And the utility board is made up of five members, three elected and two city members, the mayor and council appointee. And they'd like Councilman Ed Villa replaced off of the utility board. They say that he didn't bring nothing to the table.
So they brought that to council?
Yes, so we'll be meeting on that.
So council didn't give an immediate response. You guys are going to have a discussion at a meeting?
Yes, they'll have a discussion at the meetings.
All right.
So we did have the second meeting of ordinance calling for an election on November 8th, 2022 to authorize imposition of additional 1% sales tax on retail sales within the city of La Jolla. Now, you know, our rate is 3%, you know, they'll take our rate up to 4%. And folks, we're, we're doing good.
Yeah.
Inflation hit everywhere.
It did.
I mean, look at it, you know, I mean, just like, and I know this is on the utility side, but piping, you know, is double asphalt, you know, it's, it's went up 50%. Every item that we buy for the public has went up.
Yep.
Salaries have went up.
Yeah.
And if you want a workforce, you got to pay it. Just look up Buildings Montana and see what's going on. This did pass on for second reading on the 1% for 6-0.
Okay.
But before it passed, Councilman Ed Villa wanted to see about a two-year sunset on the 1%.
Okay.
And the motion failed for lack of a second. So then Councilman Villa said, well, I'd like to take that to only salaries only and hire more people. And that motion also failed for lack of a second.
Okay.
So we went on to the authorization to commence condemnation of Green Farm Holding, which is 27496 Frontage Road. This is the old Gibson building.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's, it's in rough shape, man.
Rough shape, you know, the facade's fallen off the front. It looks like it's fallen off the back. We're kind of concerned about the roof, you know, falling in becomes a hazard. So we're going to look, see about taking that and tearing it down.
Okay.
And that also did pass. And so we went on to committee and board reports. And Councilman Damon Ramirez talked about rec board. And he said, you know, the football registration started last week and will run until August 12th.
Okay.
Volleyball registration starts this week and it'll go until August 19th. And we also received a grant from the state for 23,500 for the increased costs to our lifeguards.
Oh, wow, okay, so we're going to pay some salaries with this?
To, yes, for the lifeguards. And what, what happened this year is, you know, with lawnmower going to $18 and everything, nobody became lifeguards.
Right.
And you got to have municipal pools where you're opened up and you got to have staff. So I thought that was a great program that the state had.
Yeah, the valley really kind of facing that employment shortage across the board, if you will. So it's good to see some funds to revitalize and help support those lifeguards.
Yes.
Okay.
And so we went on to city managers' comments. And we've started the budget process for 2023. We're working on the 50-50 tree program. Now, if you have a hazardous tree within the right of ways, come see us. You know, first round, we had eight applicants, but now we have 20 more after that storm. And that storm, you know, was two inches and a half hour. And our system's built for one inch and a half hour. So, you know, the intensity of the storm that we had overloaded all of our systems. It flushed out gravel out of the alleys. I saw where it took up sections of asphalt. And that's the second one this year. We had one in May and that came from down south, that was five inches. So as we talk about climate change, and you're seeing that a lot, and you're seeing that this, right now, about the record heats and stuff like that. Rest assured that city council over the past years have been working to make us more resilient by putting on utility board, having generators put on reverse osmosis, but when we built our wastewater treatment plant, that we had it within there. But also to put generators at our critical wells and pump areas. So when electricity, if it does go out, we're able to still provide water and sewer services. You know, I'll never forget a couple of years ago when they had that rolling brownout from Comanche Grasslands and it took out our Comanche Power Plant. And it took out Southeast Colorado. And we were hours away from the water level being into below our mains. And you can't have water mains go empty because they'll break on you.
Yeah.
And that's, that would have been every bit as worse as that Texas deal.
Yeah, so these backup services with the generators to keep the pumps going. And we keep that water system from getting damaged while it's running dry. We, we prevent it from running dry.
That's right, you know, we keep the system and we make it where people can still do the necessaries at their house, you know, not with electricity, but with everything else. We also tore out all the trees and along the arroyos.
Yep.
Now, you say, ah, what's the difference? Does that make? Well, capacity within those arroyos really make a difference on passing floods through. You know, you saw the, in the May one, the amount of debris that was coming out of the Southlands.
Yeah.
And just think if we'd had all those trees and it had hung up.
Yep.
That has sent that water everywhere.
Well, I watched, in Swink, they had a railroad tie had drifted out of someone's yard. So the setup was they put railroad ties around their yard for decor. And then when the water came in, they floated off.
Fluted off.
They floated right down the road. An entire railroad tie went down into a drain and it clogged that main drain.
What happens.
And then several buildings, businesses flooded because of it.
Because of it, yeah.
Yeah, and so that drainage system is integral and you, you might only need it one time a year.
You might not need it one time in 10 years.
Yeah, but you, when you need it, it needs to move that water.
So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he needed to anchor those down, you know, make your stuff more resilient. You know, say that we had a tornado come through. Well, part of our system should survive to where we can keep services going and stuff.
Yeah.
So it's, those are days we're in and we can do this.
Yeah, we can.
I'm fully convinced that we're better than this.
We're on the right track, yeah.
Yes, stage one, water restrictions, just make it a lifetime habit. Don't water after 10 or before 6:00 PM. I mean, you said heat, it'll just burn your yard up.
Yep.
We've had that happen. I mean, you know.
Yeah, the evaporation is so high during the heat of the day.
Burns your grass unless you own like that golf course where they got real short grass and certain type, you know, then they give it a spritz, just keep it wet just a hair, you know, so it doesn't burn.
Yeah.
Where, because it's so short.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but leave it to grass longer and don't water.
Yep.
During those times.
Yep, so water in the evenings and in the mornings.
Yep, weeds, 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 you know, we're trying to work on our weeds. Try to work on your weeds. Together we can make it better. And boy, after that last storm, they grew about a foot and a half, I think.
Everything's got fresh growth on it.
Oh, there was places that I thought, oh, man, look, this looks good. And then I came back after storm and I go, oh, no, this don't look good no more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's right where I'm at, too. I've got to clear some weeds off my property. We got, we got to move a car to get to them. So, yeah, they grow.
Asphalt patching, you know, we're doing it on Thursdays. We're prepping the holes on Wednesdays. So I know we're going to be doing up on Raton on Wednesday and Thursday and get some couple of areas fixed back better.
Okay.
Storms damaged at the golf course. We, we took all the crews out there, fixed all the damaged trees and a few buildings, turned in the insurance, what we couldn't. They had a pump that needed fixed, finally found the part and got it done. You know, they did a good job. And the transformer bank behind the post office was damaged. And so they repaired it as well as had it reinforced two poles after that last storm.
Wow, so there was a considerable amount of damage in the city of La Jolla.
Sure, you know, and it's, it's, it's something that you see every storm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Comes around, so.
Airport fuel sales, they're steady even though prices keep going up. I mean, it's over $7 for aviation gas.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, we talk about the cars and stuff like that. Well, try to be a pilot.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of tough.
So they're still staying steady even though we've had our pricing increase.
That's right.
Which, so I had an economy professor who would say that's called price elasticity. And so that's how far you can stretch the price and people will steep, keep buying it.
That's right.
And so it works with cigarettes, milk and gasoline. They can put the price about anywhere they want to and people will still buy it because they're necessary commodities.
Yep.
So, yeah, they're still flying out of the airport.
Still flying out of the airport.
Which we got to talk, our airport's a very nice facility.
Beautiful.
And we've got a long runway.
Long runway.
A little bit, little bit longer than the other guys. So that puts us ahead a little bit. So we get a little more traffic, yeah.
And FAA has been very kind to us and they're looking at some upgrades out there right now.
Very cool.
Yeah, so stage one, fire restrictions. If you don't start a fire, come talk to the fire chief.
Yep.
Don't do it.
And now that's for all of Otero County. That's just, that's even beyond just the city limits here.
Guaranteed, that's all Otero County.
If you're doing ag burning, you still got to talk to that fire chief and get your permit.
Brad Davidson.
Yep.
Come on in and see him.
All right.
And building upgrades are being done to house DNAV. And DNAV is Daniel Hyatt's company. And they're running locate out of here. We did meet with his partner, very impressed with their operations. They had worldwide operations and they're wanting to take some of this and bring it right back into La Jolla, Colorado. So next time you see Daniel Hyatt, you thank him.
Mm-hmm, yeah, he's doing good things for the community.
Great thing for the community and we need those new type of businesses that are technical, digital and bring us into the 21st century.
And, you know, I'm all for it with consulting with A Heart LLC. It's kind of what we do. We're developing a new media platform for our community and getting more community involvement. And I think we're going to be doing some piggybacking with Daniel's new technology in the community. And so very excited to have him opening shop here.
Yes, and Mayor Joey Ellis, he said that he had somebody approach him about the old bookstop where we built a parking lot between 3rd and 4th on Santa Fe on the west side.
Oh, yeah, this is, we're talking about a little book, a book. Oh, yeah. This is, we're talking about a little book, a book cubby or a community.
A book library.
Yeah, little community library nook.
Yeah. You know, bring one, drop one, pick one up.
Mm hmm. Like the one up at Otero College. Have you seen that?
Yes, I love that one.
Isn't it beautiful?
Tim Walsh did that. And, yeah, so I like that. I think that Walt Cranston would loved that. There's never a bad book to read.
Now they're gonna put his name on it. Is that the case?
I hope so. Or the bookstop or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, in memory of and stuff like that. I think, I think he deserves it.
I still have bookshelves full of books that came out of the bookstop. Like before, well, during Walt's ownership and then when Jackie had it for a while and she moved all the inventory to the curio cabinet building, I would go in there almost on a daily basis and buy a nickel book. You know, you can't get cheaper entertainment.
Well, I'll tell you what, I used to go in and talk to Walt and, you know, we'd be talking about a certain book or something. And now I'd say, hey, man, you know, like, do you got any more copies of Pioneer Parade? Which was about Higginby Valley. And he would go through and go, yeah. And you'd see him walk over to these, all these stacks.
And he's so right where it was.
Right, and then he'd just pull the book out.
Yeah.
I was always amazed. That was just so impressive.
Yeah, when I was a kid, I had him order a lot of books for me.
Yeah.
And he would order, he'd special order it. There was, there was one series that you just couldn't get at the library, you couldn't get anywhere. And he'd order the entire series because he knew, I was on book number seven and I was gonna read to twenty, you know? So, yeah, very missed by the community.
Very missed, yeah.
And that would be a great way to honor his memory.
Yeah. So I was real glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Lisa Panto, Councilman Lisa Pantoia, she talked about Arc Valley Communities That Care. They have a survey going called Safe Play Places for families to go. Please go to the Communities That Care's website and take the survey. You know, and let them know, you know, hey, what do we need? How we do? If we don't talk about it, we'll never get it.
Exactly. And now consulting with A Heart LLC is partnering with Communities That Care.
Nice.
And so we do have that survey on the back burner. So we're gonna get that released on cco news.org and we'll do some distribution across the social media platforms. So if you guys haven't already seen that, check it out. We'll have it right here.
All right. And with that, meeting's over.
All right. We put a bow on it, huh?
Put a bow on it, wrap it up.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time, Rick. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we appreciate what you guys are doing.
And I appreciate everything you're doing.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Yeah, very good. You guys couldn't see it, but we just had a handshake and a wink and a nod. For Rick Klein and the La Jolla City Council, I'm Adrian Hart and this is About the Valley.